Welcome to the June 16, 2022 Madison Planning Commission. Roll call. Here.
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 Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Cottle?
Here.
Mr. Seifer?
Here.
Ms. Waller?
Here.
All right, we got a quorum. Next item is acceptance of the agenda. Any additions or corrections? Seeing that there are none, we'll move forward with the agenda as published. Uh, next item is approval of the minutes from the May 19, 2022 meeting. Any additions or corrections? Any motion?
Mr. Bruce?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wesson?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Epstein.
Mr. Brooks?
Epstein.
Mrs. Johnson?
Epstein.
Uh-oh.
Mr. Cottle?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifer?
Epstein.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna put the past the minutes. That's the record. All right, okay. Minutes approved. All right, next item on the agenda is public comments for anything that is not on the agenda tonight or is under, uh, site plans. Otherwise, we're gonna ask you to hold your comments, uh, until we get to each item on the agenda. We'll have you state your name and address and hold your comments to three minutes or less. Uh, in the case of Everstead-Madison, we do have an opportunity. We're gonna hear about that under the preliminary plat as part of the, uh, public hearing. So, uh, any comments with respect to Everstead subdivision or site plan, we'll take those comments at that time, uh, as part of that preliminary plat. But if you have comments on this time about Stabridge Suites or Primrose School or anything else that is not on tonight's agenda, now would be your opportunity to come up and speak. Do you have any comments, ma'am? Hmm?
Line is not bringing on the agenda.
Then now's your opportunity. So it's not on the agenda, now's the time to come talk, or whether it's Stabridge or Primrose, or, yeah, Primrose.
Jennifer Coe, 910 Highland Drive. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to put this on the record. Um, I've come before you today to speak to you about removing Highland Drive from the Transportation Master Plan. The Planning Commission will vote on this when they bring the new comprehensive plan up for adoption. The current Transportation Master Plan shows Highland Drive was adopted in April of 2018 for bicycle and pedestrian improvements and an 80-foot right-of-way. The current status of Highland Drive is we are still on the city's GIS map as Highland Drive Reconstruction Project. Remove Highland Drive from the Transportation Master Plan. Why oh why? Is Highland classified as some major thoroughfare along with Eastview, Browns Ferry, Palmer Road, which has industrial as well as other commercial enterprises? These roads actually go somewhere, whereas Highland doesn't go anywhere. It dead-ends into Eastview. It's only a mile long and 100% residential. Why is Highland's relate, what is Highland's relationship with these roads? Eastview is four miles long. Mill Road goes all the way to County Line. Browns Ferry will take you to Athens. Let's look at the right-of-way on the Transportation Master Plan. It's 80 feet and three lanes. Highland Drive is currently a 60-foot right-of-way. See the county plat. There are already sidewalks on both sides for the most part, and it's completely built out with a curb and gutter. It's inside of a housing development, and you would have to condemn our front yards to expand the right-of-way. Why on earth would a road with a 25 mile an hour speed limit be on, on the Transportation Master Plan? Now that the city has removed these speed tables and put double yellow lines down the center of Highland, it looks like a highway. According to U.S. News and World Report, the home values are affected by what type of road that you live on. And a double yellow line indicates it's a serious road, that traffic will be moving faster than 25 miles an hour. Spending time in your front yard will be unsafe at 35 to 55 miles an hour. There is the issue of transparency around this master planning document. The project on Highland started a year and a half ago as a Madison Utilities project, and then the topic of roundabouts slowly leaked out from the engineering department. How did the Highland project go from relocating a water main to putting roundabouts up and down Highland? And then I find the planning document with an 80-foot right-of-way. But the most significant fact of the matter is that, once your road is on the Transportation Master Plan, you become subject to becoming part of another comprehensive master plan. For Parks and Rec, the Singin' River Trail, yes, I found Highland Drive is briefly mentioned on page 167 of the Singin' River Trail Final Plan. Where is the document for the Highland Drive Reconstruction Project? This is an issue of public trust. Every project has an end game as part of the planning process. So what is the end game? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it and, uh, acknowledge that you had mentioned this to me last month and that we, I asked you to speak and put that on record. So I will, I'll get with staff afterwards. I know we're probably ways away from updating the, the master plan, but, uh, I'll work with staff and figure out when the next opportunity is for that and make sure that we don't forget. Yes, thank you. So, any other public comments for anything not on the agenda or with respect to the other two items? All right, if not, we will move forward with the mini-storage facilities, open up public hearings for, starting with mini-storage facilities, item number one, zoning text amendment to allow mini-storage facilities in the B2 district. Uh, is the applicant the city or is there somebody else speaking?
I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Is there any questions?
Um, no, I'm good. Just stand by. I guess we'll let the staff make the presentation and then we'll follow up with some questions if we have any.
This is a request, uh, to allow indoor, uh, storage facilities, uh, in the B2 district. There's also a request to amend section 12-2, which would, uh, provide a definition for, uh, such storage units. Uh, this came about, we had a, uh, inquiry about, uh, uh, a particular property in the city of Madison. It was zone B2 and they wanted, uh, an indoor facility. And, uh, it's only allowed in B3, so we was, uh, not able to do that. It was an area town we were not really wanting to see B3 in. Uh, B2, B3 really needs to be on, like 72 or Madison Boulevard, because that district is one that draws more of a regional market instead of inside the city community mark, uh, uh, community market. It was discussed about the text amendment, uh, if it could be changed to add this to B2. And, uh, so we did the research, and, uh, the more we looked into it, um, this was, you know, I think they were focused on a particular side. I had to focus on the whole city. Was this something that, uh, would be compatible in B2? Uh, and, um, so started looking at a bunch of the different conditions and stuff in B2, and the more I looked at it, the more I realized, wait a minute, let's see if it just works in B2. So we looked at the screening, uh, and wall standards in B2, the site design, the architectural requirements, the lighting requirements, the parking requirements, the buffer requirements, and, uh, the height requirements. It's 35 feet minimum, uh, maximum in, uh, in B2, which is a one-story. So it started looking like we had, uh, the type of things surrounding the use that would, uh, already, that's in the zoning code, would, uh, uh, buffer this or any impact this would have on the neighbors that would, uh, be there to protect those. The other thing is the use itself. It's an indoor facility, uh, with, uh, that's, that's quiet. It's, uh, not making any kind of real impact on the neighbors. So, so when we thought about this, the more we saw it, the more we thought it was a good idea, uh, that, uh, it was something that we supported. This is kind of, uh, this is the applicant sent this, and we kind of, this is kind of an idea of what you would be looking at, uh, with architecture and, uh, those type of things. And, um, we do recommend it with, uh, condition that, uh, 5% of the square footage be Class A office. Uh, and one of the reasons, uh, this allows a little bit of a mixture in there, but it also, um, uh, allows this to generate, uh, some, uh, some sales tax, yeah. Uh, the other is that it be located on a frontage with a, a collector arterial. There are some B2 areas that are on what we would call a more local street. Uh, Plaza is, is one of those that, uh, we would prefer this not to be on. So we would recommend approval, uh, with these, uh, uh, these conditions. Um, and, uh, recommend adding a definition to the, the mini-storage. Only indoor, uh, storage with access, uh, from within the building.
All right. Thank you, Johnny. We'll open it up for public comments. All right. No public comments, okay. Uh, comments from the commission?
I was slightly confused. Are we changing one specific project in one specific location? Or we're changing B2 for this to be acceptable in B2 areas across the city?
Across the city.
Okay.
And it's conditional, right?
Right.
Also, if I could just, um, ask, I, I see your definition there on the screen about the, adding the definition for the indoor storage with access from within a building. So that would be, um, under this, I see section 12-2 definitions of commonly used terms. So that's what would be, your statement there is what would be in that language?
It would be added into that section. There is nothing there now.
Right.
Uh, we have no definition for many storage.
Okay. But it's gonna say that about the, the fact that there'll be access from indoors?
Right. Technically, all storage is indoors. I mean, the storage is going in a little, so you have to put that caveat in there about entering, you know, from, from inside, uh, to kind of define that.
Good. Yeah, I think that's what makes it fit more with the B2. I agree with that. Thank you. Right, but it, I was looking, the language there doesn't, I, I'm not seeing it. Maybe I'm overlooking it, but I'm not seeing that language about indoor storage with access from within a building. Am I looking at it? Access from within, gotcha. Thank you.
And technically, I closed public comments, but I'll go ahead and allow it in this case, so. Can be brief.
Thank you. Jocelyn Brower, Taylor's Crossing. Yeah, and I'm only speaking because I didn't realize that involved every, all those, um, districts. And I am very worried about something that's, you know, we've all said we don't want County Line looking like 72. And the appearance, you know, is something that is distracting. It's not neighborly. It's not small-town community and does distract from the appearance.
And this would apply in that case, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments from the commission before we take a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wesson?
Aye.
Ms. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Cottle?
Nay.
Councilmember Seifer?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item is Town Madison Phase 12. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right, Johnny?
What about we set a record?
This is a certified plat, uh, for three commercial lots on six acres. Uh, this is in the Town Madison subdivision, and this is, uh, Phase 12. Uh, this property, as you can see, is, um, highlighted in yellow there, and it's, uh, south of Stadium Way. It's west of, uh, uh, Outfield Drive. It is owned, uh, UC, Urban Center. And, uh, this is basically to, uh, divide the properties into three tracks. The certified plat is on your left, and you see, uh, a small track that'd be at the, at the, uh, intersection of Stadium Way and Outfield Drive. Uh, below that is, uh, another, uh, tract, uh, and then this other, uh, the, uh, bottom tract is, uh, you see, has access to Town Madison Boulevard. There's an ingress egress easement that goes all the way up, uh, to all three lots. The drawing on the right is the build, development, or what is being built or has been approved by you. Uh, you did a site plan. It was called Villages of Town Madison a few months ago. Uh, that is the, that, uh, development at the top, uh, and there's other commercial developments you've approved. I believe that's Chipotle at the bottom there, and, uh, uh, they're dividing this up into separate lots. Uh, generally, this means somebody wants to Generally, this means somebody wants to buy their, their part out. There'll be ingress egress. We recommend approval. We would want to blanket ingress egress over the parking because it's all so interconnected and we have those signatures yet we still need. And that's, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Open up for public comments? Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wester.
Aye.
Ms. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is three subdivision lot two, Eastview subdivision, certified plat for one residential lot and one common area on .64 acres. Applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right. Acknowledged. Johnny?
This property is at the intersection of, really of Manningham Way and Eastview Drive and Eastview subdivision. Property is zoned R1A. And as you can see, this is the certified plat and they're carving a little area out of Lot Two. And the reason they're doing that is the subdivision sign was constructed on that property. And one of those deals, a lot of times you're into building a subdivision and the contractor has a, a little time, they'll just go out and put the sign in. Didn't realize that they didn't have a common area. This is creating a common area for that sign and that will make everything compliant. We recommend approval. We do need, uh, they do have some area, uh, they do reference final plat in some of their certificates. It's a certified plat. We need certificates. The engineering department has asked that the vacation of easement information be approved before, uh, before they allow the CO for the house that's being constructed on that house to be issued. That's the certificate of occupancy. We have all those approvals and I believe the vacation of easement will be on the city council agenda for first reading at this next meeting. Is that correct? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Open up for public comments? Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve.
I think we got a question here.
Got a question.
Sorry?
Who maintains the sign? Is the lot owner or the?
Is it an HOA or?
It'd be the homeowners association. If they wasn't a homeowners association, it'd be the owner of record as it appears in the Texas assessor's office.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Mr. Wester.
Aye.
Ms. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next item is University of Alabama Huntsville Foundation Phase One, certified plat for two industrial lots and one tract on 85 acres. The applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right. Acknowledged. Johnny?
This property is located north of Production Avenue and Jetplex Circle, which tees into it and it's, uh, it's east of County Line Road. And it's to create two lots and one tract. At first, it's in the M1 district, industrial district. And you see the two lots, Lot 1A and Lot 1B is being created. Tract, the tract is running along the top of subdivision and that has ingress egress, future ingress egress for the development. And this been split up with some for some sort of future development and we recommend approval with just signatures.
All right. Open up for public comments? Oh, we got a public comment here.
I actually have a question. I read something about residential. Is there anything in there that would be, leave that open in that particular?
I don't think it's zoned residential at all, right? The zoning is, it's industrial, yeah.
Thank you.
FedEx is already under construction on one of the lots, right?
The lots in H, the lots in H, it's out on this.
Oh, okay.
And this, uh, the line, put the H for two year.
Okay.
All right. Closed public comments. Comments from the commission? Just to verify, Track Two, I guess will be, eventually be a road and will it have, the property from the north will also have access to that or are they going to add, have to add property to make that a main road or?
The plan is to have a road on this property ultimately to expand road onto the property to the north.
So it'd be like a two-lane road? Eventually, it'll be a four-lane road because they would contribute the other half?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wester.
Aye.
Ms. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next item is Barnett Crossing Phase One, final plat for 46 residential lots on 53 acres. The applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right. Johnny? Keep it busy tonight.
That's why I sat in the first chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I decided that.
After all these years, we finally got you in.
Um, this is, uh, the first phase of Bardet Crossing to file for final plat. And it's just east of Greenbrier Hills. And it's at that, kind of that, uh, corner there, that curve there of Hardeman Road. The property is, uh, the property that we'll be concerned with is the development. There's a little bit of, uh, both, a little bit of R3 and RC2 involved in this. It's exactly like the preliminary, so it's, there was no difference in, in that. You see the development here. So it is for 30, 46 lots. There'd be 30 RC2 lots, 16 R3 lots, 3,512 linear footage of street, 41 acres of open space, 20-foot Greenway easement located along the south boundary of the subdivision will be dedicated to the public as well. And, uh, we recommend approval. We do need a deed or, uh, or easement, uh, or, uh, to the city or the public green space that's going to be, a lot, go along with this. And the area shown on the plat, conservation easement is used. The specifics of the easements must be defined so that we know exactly what they, what they mean and what could be done in the easement and established in the signed document. Construction plans for the Greenway must be approved before the recording of this plat. We have those, but we still have to, to make sure that everything is right before, they're not approved yet, before they're approved and signatures. The engineering department needs to submit as-built, performance bonds and a sign fee. And that's for the street signs that go in. Our public works department puts them in and they pay a fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Pandemic.
All right. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve. Subject to comments.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wester.
Aye.
Ms. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We have one more final plat before we start getting into preliminaries. The next final plat is Bella Woods Phase One, final plat for 47 residential lots on 118 acres. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? Johnny?
This is the first final plat for Bella Woods as well. And it's zoned RC2 as we, it's the same as the other, part of the other. And this is kind of a look at the first phase. It's very similar to the preliminary. It's for 47 lots. The average lot size is 12,671 square feet and the smallest lot is 9,340 square feet. It's hard to read up there and you may be able to see it on your map better, but it has five tracks. One and two are for the undeveloped areas and, uh, uh, no, three, four and five are for the, uh, for the future phases. Track one is the undeveloped commercial lot along Brown's Ferry. Track two is not slated for development. We have two common areas through, or we have six common areas. Three and four are for public, uh, open space with a conservation easement overlaid. One and six are for private open space with a conservation easement overlaid. Two and five are little common areas in the middle of the cul-de-sacs. There's 2,123 linear feet of new street and 2.04 acres along the north side will be dedicated to be consolidated into the right-of-way of Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road. We recommend approval. And we would ask that the dedication of the, of that be put into the dedication certificate and specifically mentioned. That plan showing the location of all mature trees on the residential lot where at that point, and I explained that in the email where, uh, the, their CCRs and everything are being finalized and we, we need that map to ensure that we know, that they know and we know, you know, what's supposed to be taken off the lot and not. And the legal description and the map have a couple of discrepancies in their bearings and distances. And we have several engineering comments. They have the bonds and the spreadsheets that they need. The most updated flood study needs to be added. They need some language in there for public ingress and egress over the common areas. And to mention all lines shown on the plat where they are, ensure the easements along the rear lots there of 29 through 34 are parallel with the property line or they have to be described if they're not. And label the areas reserved for subdivision entrance signs so that we don't get in the same issue we got in for, for the last one or Eastview and then they need to pay their sign fee.
All right. Thank you. At this point, we'll open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Move to approve. Subject to contingencies.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wester.
Aye.
Ms. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next item is preliminary plat. This is for Madison Branch Phase One, preliminary plat for 97 residential lots on 101 acres. Applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right. Johnny?
This is the old Halsey property and it's at termination point there of Halsey Drive and the property is zoned RC2. And this is a, we see here, this is a, it's a, a slide drawn, it's preliminary plat. We're getting optimistic with final plat on there, but it's certified plat, it's a, it's preliminary plat. For 97 lots, the smallest lot is 7,798 square feet. There are three tracks for future phases. Common areas, uh, one and two are reserved for open space. Common areas four and five for stormwater detention. They're planning 6,965 linear footage of street. You remember, you approved the layout in March 24th of 2022. Some of the items that are important, I thought I might have another photo in there, with the development agreement for this phase, the submittal of a tree, inventory and mitigation plan. It is still a comment on your plans, but we have received that. We received that, I believe it was late yesterday, early this morning, I cannot remember, but we're still reviewing that to determine if it's something we can approve. And even with this in Bella Woods, we, we look at these very hard and make sure that they're out before they get approved. The first phase is consistent with a 90, it's a little more, but it says approximately 95 lots. This is 97, so there'll be two less than the next phase. Development of lots cannot begin earlier than 2022. Construct, future connector road portion of this plat is doing that. Part of that is Madison Boulevard or the Madison Branch Boulevard, so they're doing the part of it for this phase. And as you know, we did the location character, character and extent for the roundabout there at Hardeman and Halsey. So that will be done in conjunction with this, but it'd be a city project. So we, the planning comments, like I said, we have one, but it's not been approved, so it's still a contingency and signatures. We had quite a few engineering comments and Michael was here, if you have any questions on those. This was a heavy month. We had a lot of items this month. We were busy with, with other things and we just never called up. But the comments that are on there are not showstoppers. We said in tech review and post tech and talked about that, is there anything on here that would cause this not to need to go forward? And the answer was that there wasn't. There's a lot of stuff, but it's not those things that, that would stop it. Really things that stop something from going forward is things that would cause a redesign. You look at it and you go, they can't do it this way, they're going to have to redesign it, then we need to stop and wait till that happens or flood boundaries getting approved that may cause a redesign or some of those things.
All right. Thank you, Johnny. Open it up for.
I'm sorry. I want to say one other thing. You do have public correspondence from Ms. Eisen. It should be on top. I tried to put those separate, but, and she may be here to speak, but she has some issues with questions about drainage.
I don't have any. Do you?
Yeah.
Maybe there's, you have two copies?
I'll go ahead and open up public comments and if you want to run us through your concerns, let's just go ahead and we'll get it on record that way.
Yes, I have just been.
Name and address, please.
Linda Eisen, 10100 Long Metal Road. Our property adjoins on the backside of Halsey where Track One is. And we have been trying to work with the City of Madison and we also have talked to the engineering, people like that who were in Denver several times when they were out surveying. And we just have continuous questions because the property line that they currently show on this panel shows that the drainage is actually way up above where our property is and there's really drainage issues back behind our property. We have a culvert that's right there and currently with the two subdivisions of Green Hills Woods and Cedar Acres, that culvert already sometimes will overflow from those subdivisions. So we're trying to figure out what is going to happen with the back of our property when they start developing behind us. And then I just wanted to speak with the engineering department and the developer.
Okay. And Mr. Anfingers here also, so I'm sure, he usually stands behind this development, so if he needs to get involved, we can bring him into the discussion. All right. Any other public comments?
Jocelyn Brower, Taylor's Crossing subdivision. I'm speaking, of course, regarding this Halsey development. It's now been renamed Madison Branch, which is confusing to citizens. You do kind of lose them along the way when you do rename. It'd be nice to have them both together. I'm very concerned with the construction of almost 100 homes. If you include this other subdivision that's been zoned earlier, that's another 50. And then off of Huntsville-Brown's Ferry, which does affect Burgreen there, that's another 50. So now you're looking at about 200 homes in that area that you're getting ready to build. Have you seen the recent Hardy Ben Burgreen Road traffic study? I have requested the study and have not seen it yet. The West Side Master Plan? The West Side Master Plan called for a traffic study to be done in two thousand sixteen. It was vital to the plan and our growth. Since then, multiple rezones to residential have occurred despite warnings from this plan. We've still got, you know, builds going on off Hardyman. This plan was paid for by our tax dollar, taxpayer dollars to be careful about growth. Quote I will read once again here at council. "So much growth in what has historically been an agricultural area puts a strain on adjacent and nearby roads, utilities, police and fire service, and as people with children move in, schools. If the remaining portions of undeveloped land continue to build with the same pattern, the consequences for Madison could be grim." Could be grim is the language that was used. "Have you all done your due diligence to make sure the West Side is prepared for this growth? I hope so, and I ask that you stop right now, if not, and take a breath. For the safety of our citizens and our children, our infrastructure needs to be in place. Hardyman Road is an area with many teenage students and drivers going to and from James Clemens High School. The parking lot is fairly full with JC, with our student drivers. Recently, one parking lot entrance was closed on the backside and it led to delays and cars backing up even further than usual. Burgreen will back up all the way to Hardyman. I hope that you will and it backs up the other way up to Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road. I hope that you will agree that the proximity to the high school adds an additional safety concern and responsibility. And now another elementary school will be added in close proximity. Madison Engineering Department recommended Hardyman Road widening from County Line to Burgreen, one point eight eight miles, along with Burgreen Road widening, two point two seven miles from Hardyman to Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road, and Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road widening from Burgreen to County Line, which is supposed to relieve part of the congestion on our end at Hardyman. To date, nothing has been done, but the growth just keeps on coming. I've been told we got this. You don't. This is going to be a mess for residents and people that live there just say, I can't believe it's happening. So I will ask you that you please help to make sure we get this right now, not later. Planning for our growth on the West Side is key. Lives, including young students and drivers, are at stake. What is the date planned for the additional infrastructure? Not just the roundabout, um, I've been told that there will also be a light at Burgreen and Hardyman. Let's get these dates down on paper and have a guarantee for citizens that our area will be safe. We've got, we're gonna have all those construction vehicles on that narrow country windy road with hills. So I'm, would just ask that you do your due diligence and make sure that your citizens are safe here in Madison. Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? And then we'll, I'll come back and we'll address the traffic upgrades that we talked about last month.
My name's Daniel Bell, I'm at Two Point Incorporated, um, the engineer of record on this job. I just wanted to address Ms. Eisen's comments. Or we could do it here or I could speak with her and-
No, I was gonna go ahead and, yeah, go ahead if you want to go ahead and address it.
Um, I was trying to find her lot on here and I understand what you're talking about. There's a big flume and I'd actually like to get your opinion on a couple of things of what you've seen. But we do plan not within this phase. The property within this phase is gonna remain undisturbed largely by her property. But in the second phase, there'll be a large catch basin there that we've studied and we, um, the hundred year event will stay on our property and not back up into hers. As for the culvert upstream of her property, that's not, that's not in our control there, but I do see from my, um, analysis that it probably does come over that road.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any additional public comments? Mr. Enfinger?
Enfinger, I only just wanted to add, we did a traffic study as required by the planning department. And, uh, one of the reasons that we were approved by the city, even annex and zone, was because we're providing an east-west corridor through that property that ties, uh, Seeger's to Hardeman. And so we actually will be, over time, will be improving the traffic situation in West Madison.
And I believe, is the roundabout gonna be constructed, is it gonna be constructed in conjunction with the development of your neighborhood? I don't know whether you're paying for it or whether the city is, I know we approved it last month, but, uh-
Roundabout and then the first phase and then in, uh, it may be accelerated. I understand the, the school may have a little bit different plan to accelerate that school. But when we did phase two, then, uh, we connect all the way to McSeale and at that time, the city would have the option of going all the way to Seeger. And that would help the school as well as all east west, east-west traffic in West Madison.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any additional public comments? Comments from the commission, I guess I'll just start with staff. You want, you have any comments to add as far as the traffic and improvements or I think we covered it, uh, with the roundabout and the additional traffic light going in, correct? Is there any other recaps from what we approved last month you'd care to?
The, the intent is to have the, the roundabout and the traffic signal done, um, in association with this project. The city has approved a contract, uh, with the engineering firm to, um, do the legal descriptions. So it'll be a little bit of right-of-way that has to be acquired, um, on the west side of Hardeman Road, um, near, along Halsey Road. So we're getting those legal descriptions, um, prepared. With the approval of the construction drawings, we can then get a detailed cost estimate and then we'll be, um, uh, Mr. Enfinger's company will be building it, will be doing a reimbursement that council will approve. And council is also on board with going forward with the traffic signal at Burgreen and Hardeman. It does take about a year to get a traffic signal because there's a lead time of about nine months to get the, um, all of the components that you need for a traffic signal. So the intent is to move as quickly as we can, but it, it will take a little bit to get it done, but so won't the development.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the commission?
I wanted to ask, um, just about the tree removal and preservation plan, just a little bit more about that. And I, I communicated with you some this week about this property as well as the Bella Wood. So, um, and you said that when you get these plans in, you look over them very carefully. And so, um, I'm just asking for you to confirm that when you look at these plans, you make sure that the tree preservation is consistent with the RC two cluster. And the staff reports when we first, um, approve these projects where certain percentages of, uh, the property would still remain, you know, P and A or have a certain amount of tree cover. So that's the kind of thing you're checking when they submit these, is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Can you get a motion?
Move to approve, subject to a long list of comments. I'm trusting Johnny. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Westen?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Grounds?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Callow?
Aye.
Councilman Seaver?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item, and I appreciate everybody being patient. I know a lot of you have been waiting for this one. Reserve Way Town Homes preliminary plat for twelve residential lots on one point six four acres is the applicant here in wish to address the commission.
Troy Holcomb with JW Kennedy and Associates. We're the surveyor and engineer of record. We're also here to represent, uh, the owner for the property.
All right.
I'm also just here to, uh, answer any questions or address any comments-
All right.
-mission and to the public. But we do respectfully request approval for this project at this stage.
All right, thank you, sir. And I'll be taking notes as we go through and then we'll probably bring you back up to answer some questions, so. Johnny?
This property is located, uh, west of Waltryana Highway and north of Reserve Way Drive. Right there where, uh, Eastview, uh, tees in with, uh, with Waltryana. And, uh, the property, as you can see, is owned R four, multifamily residential. And, uh, it's, uh, one point six four acres. Uh, the applicant has requested preliminary plat approval for twelve, uh, lots for, uh, attached single-family dwellings. And, uh, kinda highlighted those, uh, so that you could kinda see where the lots were and where the common area was. It kinda wraps around, uh, the property. Common areas are for, uh, stormwater detention. And, uh, we, uh, recommend approval. And, uh, with planning comments, uh, need to clarify a symbol, uh, on their legend for the lot lines that we need signatures. We need an ATM permit. We need, uh, some details that, uh, are not appropriate to be removed. They need to remove the street address from the plat. They need to provide protections for their, uh, asset units on, uh, Reserve Way. Provide check dams in the ditches and the swales and provide spot elevations to allow, uh, elevations, uh, of roads and driveways, et cetera, relative and proposed drainage. They need to add, uh, buildup layer, uh, detail for the city spec to be used in the section of the road to be replaced. And provide, uh, the dimensions of the pavement, uh, that are to be replaced. Those, uh, if you have questions on those, Mike is here to answer those, uh, more thoroughly than I can on the engineering side, but we recommend approval with him.
All right, thank you, Johnny. All right, at this point, I'm gonna open it up for public comments. I'll try to make sure we get everybody heard. We'll try to do this orderly and, um, as we get kind of redundant comments here, I'll ask everybody to kinda help move things along. I do have, oh, you have a comment, Johnny?
Yes, just, uh, and I keep forgetting this, but you do have several, uh, pages of correspondence.
Okay, I'll make sure we take a look at those. Two comments though, before we go into it, is the property is already zoned R four, multifamily residential. That this property is not up for discussion as far as changing the zoning of the property. They're coming, they're coming with a valid plan. And then I know there were some comments or questions about, uh, the common area and separately about, uh, drainage. And it looks like that's being addressed with that common area as a stormwater retention pond. So hopefully that'll help alleviate some of those concerns, so. Name and address and we'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less and we'll try to get everybody, get everybody through tonight.
Yes, sir. It's Darren Davis, one four two Reserve Way. Again, um, I know there's, uh, multiple folks that wanna make comments, but I just wanna, you know, address what you said. We're not, we're not trying to say that the property, you know, shouldn't happen. We're, we're just trying to, there's a couple of concerns that we have as residents of that street, especially with properties that went in across the street. That was discussed earlier there on Eastview and Manningham. Bob Jones High School right there. You got the pre-K open up that used to be West Madison Elementary. They've taken the turn lane out that used to go into the neighborhood for, uh, for a throughway. There's a lot of traffic that goes through there, not just, you know, the one street Reserve Way. You've got Mill Creek Crossing, you've got, um, you've got Bridgefield. And with, uh, with that extra added, um, taking up that entrance, um, there at Reserve Way, the turning radius for buses is already quite difficult. And then if you put trash collection, um, people will decide that they would need to park on the street because they don't have enough parking for their, their residence. Then you're gonna see a problem on Waltryana with, with backup people trying to turn in because that is a very high-density traffic area. And I don't know if a study's been done to see how high-density that is during, uh, peak hours of, of school. So those, that's, that's the main concern with just adding another, um, street on a already congested, uh, intersection in Waltryana. Understand, growth in Madison is gonna happen and, and we're not trying to say, don't do that. We just, as commented earlier, just make sure the due diligence is done to make sure that the safety of the citizens, the pedestrians, and with the additional, uh, schoolchildren that'll be brought in with, you know, with those townhomes. You will have, uh, concerns for a high-density traffic and, and, and children playing near that corner. So that's, that's concern one. And then, you know, the drainage has already been, uh, discussed. So I'm gonna go ahead and yield, yield my time here and, and open up for other folks to comment.
Thank you, sir. All right. Gentleman over here? And I'll try to make sure we get everybody in.
Dr. Brian Mesmer, I'm at one one four Reserve Way. Um, we're next, we're one house removed from the development. So I guess our main concern is, to paint a picture, this is on a street that leads into a subdivision or there's nowhere else that it goes. There's all detached, single-family homes on about a third to a half an acre for each of the lots. So this is one point six acres for twelve townhomes that we're cramming in there. We have four houses across the street and we have one house next to the street. The zoning diagram that you guys saw is a little misleading because it's not brown the entire way. It's not R four or whatever it might be the entire way. It's a little niche that sits there. And this is mainly, I'm assuming, due to the apartments and whatnot that are a little bit more north of, um, on Waltryana. We have a major concerns concerning the value of the homes for everyone who lives there. It's been a development for fifteen or so years, uh, at this point. So the home prices have been pretty well established. We're getting rid of all the trees that are there, um, something that, you know, is a shame. We lost all the trees next to Bob Jones when that development went in. Beautiful, beautiful mini forest there. We're about to lose a little mini forest in, in our neighborhood as well, which is understandable. It's, it's a lot. But to put townhomes there to cram them in so tightly, we just fear for parking, we fear for safety. Right now, if we were to park two cars on each side of the road, you're only getting one car through, which is a huge concern. So our HOA, I'm also the HOA treasurer for the Reserve Way, I'm at Bridgefield anyway. And we have rules against, you know, trying to get people not to park on the street, of course, and getting them to park inside. We'll have no say at all, of course, about this new development. So if those individuals, uh, choose to park in front, in which, we don't know how the parking is gonna happen. We don't know if there's driveways, we don't know if there's garages, we don't know anything about that. But if they were to park in front, then all of a sudden, there's no parking available for, at all for our current HOA residents if they choose to have a party or whatnot. And there's gonna be a huge issue getting out to east, or sorry, to Waltryana. So major concerns about parking, major concerns about the lighting situation, major concerns about the pond that is apparently gonna work for the, for the water retention, which backs up into the yard, the yards of the current HOA owners. So, um, it'll back up into one one two Reserve Way. So I guess just, I, I, I hope to, you understand the picture here is that it's really in a division, all subdivision already, and we're about to just plop twelve townhomes, you know, single-family detached home community. And that zone is really just coming off of the northern part where there's already apartments in it. So I'll yield my time for the-
All right, thank you. That's all. A hand raised there? Yep.
I'm Sylvia Spencer Wallace. I live at one one six Reserve Way. And I just found out today that we're included in part of this, uh, R four zone. I don't know when that started. When we, uh, built the home from Jeff Benning, I have no re- memory, memory of that whatsoever. So maybe that's something that we can, I know our secretary or one of the, uh, members been trying to get in touch with our councilwoman, but hasn't gotten a call back. I'd appreciate if you could get back with them so we can get some questions answered. I'm here on behalf of my husband, Captain Jerome Wallace. We just found out about this a few days ago. And, uh, if we go with the belief that a picture's worth a thousand words, the first picture in the slide, it actually shows the property as being on Sullivan. So when we saw that a few days ago, I didn't even recognize that that was our street and even our home in the picture because it says it's being built on Sullivan. So I also have a concern that just like, we're just finding out, we don't know anything about this, how this is gonna affect us. We've had promises made before about it was gonna be a four-lane right there, even before they did for County Line Road. And again, I don't have dates and things prepared because we're just finding out about this. My husband couldn't even, uh, ask for a leave to be here. He's out of the country. He has spent his entire life serving this country. And everything that we have, everything is invested at that house, in that community. And we're asking for more time before you guys vote so we can at least look into what are you about to do to our lives? If this is one of these things where they're gonna end up doing Airbnbs, if you read any of the stories, there've been shootings at Airbnbs, there are wild parties. We have a very quiet and lovely, traditional Madison, Alabama home. Even where one of our neighbors had told us about the little bridge that was there was like, was for horse and buggy. And the infrastructure has never been updated and you keep adding and adding. Schools, new communities, all of this. And on that little bitty lot where there used to be just a one, not a double Y, but a, just a regular trailer home set there. And now you're gonna put twelve more houses, which can be twenty-four cars. We've got students. It's a nightmare trying to get out of our street just as a community. And like you said, if somebody parks on the street, you can't get your car out if there are two people parked on the street. We have lots of teenagers with the school. Like, so we don't know anything about this. The way it was advertised, it was advertised as being on Sullivan. We thought this didn't concern us, not in our backyard. If you look on the first slide that you put up, it says Sullivan Street. And, um, we're just asking that you guys do more to look in, I know Madison is growing. You guys put a grocery store there, everything, I love it, but it is murder trying to get in and out of there. And we're asking for more time before you vote to make sure that everyone knows that it's right- everyone knows that it's right there at Reserve Way and not down on Sullivan. Uh, and I, I don't know when the notice went out, but like I said, when we spoke to our, one of my board members or our HOA, they said they, they were just finding out a few days ago themselves. It's been within a week. We need more time. We wanna do research. I wanna know how this is gonna affect my life and my investment. We need to, uh, hire someone that will do a, uh, property comps to see, how is this gonna affect us? We don't know what the price, the value of these 12 new homes or, or townhouses is gonna be. We don't know if they're gonna have short-term rent restriction. It's not a big deal in Madison yet, but if you look at some of the larger cities like Atlanta, it's a nightmare with all these people who are building these things for rentals, short-term, Airbnb, whatever. And it, it's a nightmare. You have no control over your own community anymore. So we don't know what their covenants is planned to be. We know nothing. I, I don't even know, I've never even heard of this company. I was hoping to get a chance to meet the people tonight, but I see they sent representatives. We know nothing. And it just seems unfair for you guys to take a vote, make a decision that if every, just most of the people that are here, they built those homes. We built those homes. Steve, that that's gonna be, we, we built those. We put everything into it. So I ask that you give us more time before you take this vote and change our lives, and we're all just like, we don't know.
All right, thank you.
My, my husband is serving, he's still, even though he's out now, he's still taking a chance on the whole Wuhan flu because he's over in Asia bringing things back to this country that we need.
All right, thank you.
Please give us more time.
Thank you. All right, next. Uh, I think I got a hand, oh, okay. I'll take, take you after her, or you wanna come on up and then I'll, I'll have her come up next, that's fine.
Yes, I don't wanna be, oh, Jeff Anderson, 121 Reserve Way. Uh, I don't wanna repeat some of what saying, said, I just wanna be very specific in a parking concern relevant to the plan itself. Uh, what was shown up there is not the fully detailed plat. Um, there is one that-
Not this time, correct.
That has more details on it that is posted out on the website, and it shows an ingress/egress, uh, that's 20 feet wide for two units, um, of the townhomes. That's a single car wide for each unit. Uh, and that is a concern for parking. If, if there's any multi-car families, uh, that does drive the parking out to the street. So there are some specific details in the plan, uh, that I think, uh, contribute to the concerns for parking.
All right, thank you. All right, next.
My name's Kathleen Gilder. Uh, I am the co-owner of 112 Reserve Way, uh, with my husband Steve. We have been there for 16 years, and we would share the entire western boundary of our yard with these 12 townhomes. So it is inconceivable to us how, although it meets all zoning requirements, that there has been no questions or concerns about, uh, plotting 12 townhomes in the midst of an existing residential street. Uh, everyone's talked about the safety issues, the environmental issues, the, you know, impact of additional lighting, the noise, the traffic, that tri, the, the street is used by multiple subdivisions, and we have every school system, every school from pre-K now to, through the high school, uh, having bus traffic through that road. So adding 12 driveways potentially, again, we have a lack of information. Only six households were notified of this with certified letter last week. I understand that's probably the requirement, but that is not an appropriate level of citizenship for the people of Madison to have so little information, so little time to discuss. We have tried to put our comments and questions and concerns in a document for you to read over, but I get, I echo V's request. Give us more time, give us more information, so we understand how these townhomes could fit into, uh, an existing neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Was there another hand over here, or?
Wait till you-
We gotta get you on mic here, so we can take minutes.
Name and address.
My name's Pete Horton, I live at 146 Reserve Way. Uh, my wife and I moved in about 14 years ago, and my wife became the treasurer of the HOA, so we have all the, we had all the responsibilities in, of maintaining the entrance. And that entrance includes this property. We maintained all those, you know, the developer put those trees in, and the foliage and the pines, and we had to spray them for bug control, and we could maintain that, that grass. All there is common ground to our subdivision. I don't know when it was rezoned and when the city decided to take our common ground away, but evidently that's history that I'm concerned about. Uh, we also have common ground, we thought on the other side, we've been paying around the sign and also down the, down Waltriana going south for probably 50, 60 feet. And I don't know if, if really we've been paying for maintaining, uh, Mr. Benton's property or not. Well, I'm kinda confused on what our community actually owns, what the city can come and take for, you know, they expanded the, the walkway there, they took a lot of common ground there. We used to have a flower area over on the other side. When they did the, uh, walkways, they ripped all that out. They ripped all that out, too, which we kind of really have the walkway, so that was no big deal. Anyway, I just got a concern that we're taking common ground away. I know it's the subdivision talked a while ago about splitting plots so we could have common ground and have that controlled by the HOA. What's the use of doing that if come back later and take it all away without even telling the HOA that's gonna happen? Like I said, maybe water under the bridge, but.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Uh, I got one in the back, and then I'll, yeah, come on up in the back. You're already up, so come on up, and then I'll have this lady up front.
Uh, Dane Walther, 134 Reserve Way, thanks for, uh, letting me speak as well. Uh, I don't have, I think, terribly much different things to say. I wanted to say that I'm yet another person of this neighborhood who shares the concerns about, are these single-car garages with multi-bedrooms implying multi-drivers, but not enough room to park them, so they're gonna have to park in the driveway or on the street or both, because most people put storage in their garages nowadays, not cars. So that's a concern. Um, and, uh, I, I agree with, uh, the, the traffic of flowing into and out of Reserve Way is difficult now, just with people even there during the day visiting a house that's there. Now we have all these additional people on the other side that's been traditionally empty, and for emergency vehicles, somebody mentioned school buses, fire trucks, uh, it's already a small enough road. We start adding a whole lot more, uh, driveways and, and roadside parking there. Uh, I think that would be a major concern for the city, not just the residents. So I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. All right, and up front here?
My name's Mary Carter. I live at 125 Reserve Way, and an awful lot of nice people have built that into a beautiful little community. And I really think with all the concerns that have been expressed here today, that this should not be approved to go in there and change the whole complexion of that little area and those, that nice whole area. And we already have traffic coming from Mill and on around there. So I agree with everyone. It's a mess now. It's gonna be a bigger mess and a more dangerous one. And let us keep this nice little community that a whole lot of people came and turned into something wonderful. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, gentleman back here. You know, we'll try to wind down comments here and get into, uh, get some of these questions answered.
I'm David Seymour, 116 Bellingham Drive. Uh, I'm in a neighborhood next door to Reserve Way, Bridgefield. Uh, I'm here in solidarity with all of my neighbors. Uh, has there been any study going on as far as, uh, dedicated left-turn lane lights, uh, coming out of Reserve Way and also on East, Eastview? Uh, and it, what, what determined that they could do 12 of these on that 1.64 acres versus six of them? Uh, to me, it sounds like it's too many and too small of a spot, uh, but I'm not an engineer, uh, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
And I don't think y'all should vote on it tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments? I got one in the back here.
My name's Sabrina Forrest. I'm at 122 Reserve Way. Um, like most of the folks stated, I just found out about this last night. So I'm the seventh house down. Apparently, they only had to notify the first six. So I'm just like everybody else, all the same concerns. I'm just requesting that we have a little bit more time so we can invest into this. Um, I know I go to work, like some people are teleworking, I work every day on the arsenal. Just coming out of my home, I've gotten almost sideswiped several times going straight across when cars are turning left. Um, if you put all these homes right there, you're gonna have even more construction, more issues with that traffic. So I don't wanna be redundant and repeat what everybody else says. We're just asking for more time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, got a hand in the back, and then anybody else after her, or we, uh, pretty much got everybody?
Hi, Beth Hollingsworth, 135 Reserve Way. We moved in, my husband and I moved in with my mother-in-law this time last year. Um, she's the original owner of the house. Um, what we're worried about is the trees being cut down. Um, the symbol of Ma, the city of Madison is a tree with "plant your roots." And I don't understand how you can cut down all these beautiful magnolia trees when our symbol of our city is about trees and planting your roots. So I urge you to stop and think about the wildlife that is gonna be affected by that and just the beauty of our city.
All right, thank you. All right, any other public comments? All right, this time we'll close down public comments, and we'll, we'll proceed with comments from the commission. I'll summarize, I think, what I, the general, uh, discussion items, and I'll, I'll engage staff here and try to knock some of these out first, and then we'll, we'll have some additional comments. But, um, I think the first thing, Johnny, I'll probably have you or Mary Beth cover this, is to recap the notification process. I know we've had to do this previously as far as what the notification process is and what the requirement is, um, to make sure that, uh, the right folks were notified. Um, then I'd probably, then I'd like to discuss just the zoning, uh, you know, the, what the R4 requirements are, that it was zoned R4, uh, what it allows for, whether it allows for rentals, Airbnb, that kind of thing. If we can just kind of cover that, those questions. Uh, then we had some questions about traffic, uh, traffic concerns, and I know, um, uh, some of it pertains to the light and actual flow at, at that intersection. Um, and then some of it, maybe the developer can answer what the plan is as far as whether it's two-car garages, one-car garage, that kind of thing. Maybe we can get some insight into, into that, although it, it may not be binding. Um, and then the other one, I think, is we just need to recap on, make sure we're covered on drainage. And then, um, for the gentleman that had a question about who owns the property, it'd probably be good, maybe a little quick educational session on where folks can find out who actually owns some of this property, um, uh, through the probate or whatever, um, or if they can come see you all, so if we could just recap that real quick. Those were kind of the general concerns I had. Um, so could we, um, start with the notification process, and I'll kind of guide you through this, Johnny, and then, uh, I'll let folks from the commission jump in if I missed anything, but, uh-
Notification process is, uh, certified mail is required to all adjoining property owners. We consider across a right-of-way still an adjoining property owner, so those on the south side of Reserve, east side of, uh, Waltriana would have to be notified as well. They have to, the letters have to be dated at least seven days before the meeting. Uh, and this is in our zoning code, uh, our subdivision regs. It is something that is also, uh, we get, uh, from the state, uh, the Code of Alabama, uh, which has the same rules, except if they say five days, we actually have it go out seven days.
So the Code of Alabama requires a five-day notice. We require a minimum of a seven-day notification?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, real quick, I think one of the problems was too, that it's not necessary, I think they weren't clear on who get notified. I think, you, you said it, but I think that the way you said it, I don't know if everybody got it.
Those, uh, those, the people who get notified are, again, those that touch the property-
Exactly.
Or, uh, are across the street from the property, and it's the property owner as their name appears in the, in the, in this case, the Madison County, uh, Tax Assessor's Office. That's where we would look to confirm, uh, who is the actual owner.
So if it changed hands within the last year, it may, they may not receive notice because it hasn't gone through the tax assessor?
That, that happens.
Yeah.
Could you, could you also address the issue that was brought up about the labeling of Sullivan Street? And do you know when the notice went out, if the property owners that were adjoining actually received something that said Sullivan Street?
Everything I have is Waltriana.
If, if you show on the first slide-
Reserve Way is labeled Sullivan Street versus Reserve Way on, on this.
Okay.
In the staff report, there was a typo.
I, I do have a concern that if, if the notice went out and there was just an error in how the street was labeled, I, I do see how a property owner could not think that it was relevant to them, and that would make me want to give them additional time.
The notice itself, uh, the public hearing notice, uh, I don't know that there was an error on the public hearing notice.
Yeah, that, could we check that or see if it, what went out to the property owners to see if it-
Oh, y'all don't have the public hearing letters.
No, we don't. I think, Johnny, can you, I just, I know this, but can you, I don't know if Mary Beth-
Somebody over there has it.
So short of the typo on the picture, is there any error in the notification?
Right.
Okay. Does it, is there a typo on there also, or not?
It doesn't, it wouldn't name the street, it would just-
Yeah, it doesn't name the street, it just says north, and it does say north of Reserve Way, west of Waltriana. So this does-
It was just your picture, Johnny, that you labeled it.
You just mislabeled your cartoon?
Okay, okay.
See, she's not a neighboring property owner, so she didn't get the numbers.
Right. Um, so second thing, Johnny, uh, we get on, uh, zoning, so the zoning R4, uh, probably, I know it predates my time, and I've been here on this commission for a very long time, it seems like, but, uh, in fact, a lot of these houses that are in this neighborhood were zoned R4, it looks like-
It was.
From the illustration.
It was. I'd say maybe not half the, that, the subdivision, if you go down the street, but, uh, there's a little bit of R4 and a little bit of R2.
So the houses across the street and adjoining were also zoned multifamily at the time, which you can build a single-family home on a multifamily lot, but at the time they were zoned multifamily, is that? Half of Reserve Way is, is actually multifamily.
You see the brown?
Yeah.
And that's going down Reserve Way. And that's in a report, too, so that would have the right name on it. And the, uh, the, uh, this was in the, uh, report. I'm just saying that they were, they were, they were, uh, most of the slides in the report had it.
Yeah, I understa, yeah, it was just the one that had it.
Yeah, just the one picture.
But, uh, all you see in brown there is R4, uh, so those, uh, you see it does go to the, to the west there a little bit, to the-
Short of their HOA covenants, they could, any of those could be multifamily homes.
Yes.
Other than their HOA covenants are binding them to be single-family.
I recall when, when Jeff Benton started developing Reserve Way, this was 2010, 2012, something like that.
It was, it was older than that, yes.
I, I know he tried to buy that property, and whoever owned it would not sell it to him. And that's why Reserve Way ended up with the, you know, with the quote vacant lot there, and I think he decided to put trees in there.
I can't remember the first name, but this, this was a member of the Betts family that owned this originally. Uh, they're, they're an old Madison family, and they, you see their names appear on properties, uh, from time to time, but, uh, I'm assuming that at some point it sold to, to the current property owner.
But there was some reason why Benton couldn't get that particular lot to add to Reserve Way when he started building it.
It was never part of the subdivision. This is an old meets and-
Never been, right. Never been, right.
So, so the... All right, so...
That's history.
Well, so the, I'll go ahead now, the, while we're talking about it, so the gentleman's concerned that he thought that they owned the property. If anybody wants to find ownership of the property, they can go to the Madison County probate website and look at the map, and it'll tell you who owns that property.
You know, I went, I went online, and I do my due diligence, and part of it is, is to look at our GIS, and then I'll jump on Google Earth, and, because I can actually drive my car down the street with that, you know, on the... I saw all the trees, so I went out there. And I could say, I said, "They've done a lot of work out here, looked really nice," you know, and I knew that, seen this before, and I figured the HOA did it. And, but, so I went back to make sure there was no easements there. I couldn't find anything that showed it, that it belonged to anybody, but the, the underlying property owner, the Betts family, and now the, the new property owner. It was just, I didn't see anything there other than that.
Next item was traffic, I know we have some traffic concerns.
Just one more thing, so one of the speakers came up and said that the map was incorrect, and that everything that's brown is not really brown.
I, I...
So the entire...
It does, that's about half the subdivision is R2, and that's the gray.
But, but this, every part that's in brown now that's R4 is correctly in the picture?
Did a little snapshot of the zoning code, so that's the correct zoning.
This is straight from the zoning map.
Okay.
All right, so traffic. So we got some concerns about, so I guess we've got multiple issues with traffic. So first of all, so the developer sounds, I mean, you're gonna build, I don't know if you know at this time, are there two-car garages, basically? I know there's some concern about some on-street parking versus being able to get cars in the garages. I mean, I don't know if you have the vision of what we all are planning at this point.
So currently, the developer, we have discussed it with them, and they do have, for each unit, will have a two-car attached garage.
A front-entry garage, and then enough parking in front of the garage if they, is there enough yard space they can park on, in their driveway also?
That's still to be determined, but there should be enough in each garage for two vehicles
Okay.
for each unit. And then plus the parking in the driveway.
Is there enough space between the driveways to even try to park on the street? Or is there, the driveways are gonna be so close that...
There should be more than enough space between driveways.
To actually park on the street?
Yes.
So if we wanted to prohibit that, then we would have to engage with city council to mark that as no parking, or...
Part of what we actually ended up doing to make it more pleasing was to have the conjoin, or connected driveways for two units each, so that there'd be less entrances and exits onto the...
There'd be enough for four cars.
So there should be four cars inside the building, and then a potential of two more on the driveway.
Have shared driveways and some green space in front of each, so it'll be aesthetically pleasing, but now it allows for parking on the public street, is what it sounds like, between the driveways.
Well, it would, but there's already currently people parking on throughout the rest of the subdivision.
Yeah. And so if the neighborhood is concerned about it being so close to the intersection, then we'd have to get it. Mark no parking, but that'd be a city council action, correct?
And this is a preliminary.
Are these two...
We're way ahead of the conversation.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to address the concerns, I understand.
I know.
We're not solving it at this point, but, but to answer the...
Excuse me, why, why you up here? Are there is two bedrooms or three bedroom, what are they?
That's currently undetermined, we don't have any architectural drawings of the layouts for each of the units. We did get an email from the developer this afternoon addressing some of the comments. Find it real quick.
And you might as well stay up, because I'll ask you about drainage next.
Currently, the townhomes will be full brick, two-car garage with 18,000 to 22,000 square feet from one to two stories.
Eighteen to 2200?
Uh, hundred.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The way I've done it before.
Well, how many, how many floors? How many floors? I, I can't remember an R4, what's the max building height? Thirty-five feet?
They indicated one to two stories.
Same as a single-family home. Now, what about drainage? So you're building a drainage, stormwater retention pond, and basically?
Yes.
Or facility, and...
As per the regulations, we have met all drainage requirements. And I, the map that's up there right now is a little bit outdated. We currently have all of the common area located in utility and drainage easement. So that's to help facilitate water drainage to the pond on the east side. And I know there even was a comment. A list in on the sheet, y'all received too, about mosquitoes and stuff like that. Currently, there is six inches, I think six inches at the bottom of the pond that will detain water. But that is a requirement for MS4 requirements.
Are you all, since I got you up here, and you're probably trying to open up for comments from the commission, but are you all working with the neighborhood at all, engaged with their HOA as far as open communication? Or, or could, could we make that happen? I think, you know, they, they've come out with a lot of, the neighborhood's come out with a lot of concerns. Pretty much by law, you're allowed to do what you're doing, by regulation, you're allowed to do what you're doing. You're allowed to put, I mean, that property is zoned R4, there's nothing we can do to change that. But if we can make this as pain, painless as possible, and have an open, open dialogue between the developer and maybe the president of the HOA to help work through some concerns and all that, I think that would go a long way. But I believe, I don't know if the gentleman over here is representing the HOA, but I don't, I don't know if you all have made contact yet, but I would recommend that that happened, if you put, or put him in contact with your, your representative.
The representative, or...
Or developer.
Currently, as the surveyor and engineer, we haven't made any kind of contact. And as far as I know, the developer hasn't either.
I, you know, I, this is, you know, I know this is not a great situation. I live in, I live in Walden, we have the exact same problem right next to us, is an R4 neighborhood, and there's 500,000, $600,000 houses that are gonna back up to apartments someday. And my neighborhood's gonna go crazy, but there's nothing by law we can do about it. That's, it's zoned R4, and we're zoned R2. And it's the way it is, and we can do the best we can, but if we can kind of build a relationship and try to go, get through issues, like, hey, the, you know, you know, the guy's pickups blocking the traffic for the school buses, can you, hey, developer, can you help out with this? Or that kind of thing, it just goes a long way. So maybe y'all can exchange information before somebody leaves tonight.
We, we actually considered many different options, and coming off of Waltriana, we would actually probably have made the conditions on Waltriana even worse. So it would, it's actually safe.
No, no, y'all, y'all.
Yeah.
Well, the, that's saying that the safer option was actually to have everything...
I'm out, can we?
Yeah.
Address the chairman, and, and we'll take care of the back end.
I got that concern, all right. So, so at this point, I think I've covered the questions that were on, on the question sheet here. But I would like to try to help bridge the relationship, because I know this is, being at the interest is awkward for an established neighborhood. And if your developer could work with the HOA, at least exchange information, so we can have a dialogue as this, as this process continues on, I think it would be appreciated, and would go a long way.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to provide any information for the developer and the owner.
And I know the staff can help bridge that relationship, but I know, we've seen that work in other neighborhoods, where, where somebody's come in and infilled on a lot in an existing neighborhood or something, and it's... And kind of bridge that, we even, Applewood's another one, we got a commercial development going in right on the corner, and they ended up working together to deal through a lot of traffic issues to make it a lot better situation. So I appreciate that. Any other comments from the commission, from this gentleman, or questions before he takes the seat?
I guess I got a question, this is just a, more of a procedural thing. Don't we usually see something like a layout, or a, or call it a site plan instead of a preliminary? I don't recall ever seeing anything of that nature.
Sometimes these are a site plan, but they would be condoed if they were, they would be all the units on one lot, or like you said, apartment complex. They're actually dividing this up into 12 lots. Oh, I think you said site plan. The layout, sometimes we do not require that because it's redundant, it's the exact same drawing, with the different, you would just be approving the same thing. If this was five phases, and you were going to, like some of these big subdivisions, you have a layout. You do your phase, but you see the whole project from beginning to end. This is it, there's, there's not gonna be anything else but this. So that's why that you, that we didn't do the layout.
Yeah, but, I mean, we haven't, didn't see any conceptual. I guess I'm, I'm kind of reflecting a lot of what I heard about timing, because in the normal process, we'd end up with a layout, and then we'd end up with a preliminary, and then we'd end up with a final. And we've kind of taken out a whole step. Yeah, I, I understand that, I'm just kind of, kind of going back to them. Yeah. That. A lot of this could have potentially been avoided if we'd gone through a more formal process. Maybe Alicia would've come out earlier, and there would have been more time.
It would be the same brief presentation.
You're not proving any new roads, you're not approving anything like that, it's just, it's almost a certified plat, except for the, you know, the, some of the infrastructure that's been put in with it, that makes it a preliminary that needs to be dedicated. And there's a few more lots that are sort of, that are in a certified plat, but it's, it would be approving the same thing twice.
I think the big unknown is there's no conceptual drawing of, of what's gonna be in the neighborhood. So I mean, that, that scares the, you know, that scares property owners, but there's, there's no requirement for that. And we can't, you know.
Yeah.
And, you know, the other thing that you're fighting is that, that when you own property in America, it means something. And as long as the property owner complies with the laws of the city, which he has, there's not a whole heck of lot you can do in terms of telling him, "You can't build that, because we don't like it." So you, you have to have a valid reason to deny somebody who is complying with all the, he's jumping through all the hoops that the city has laid out in its subdivision codes and zoning codes. So it's just kind of hard to tell him no. Ma'am, is, is, is our time to talk now, please?
Yes.
One thing, it is 35 feet to the highest picture gable, that's how it's, the height. I wanted to make sure, something in my head said 40 in this district, but I wanted to go back and make sure.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the commission? Ma'am, the hearing's closed.
From the commission?
Yeah, from the commissioners, I closed the public hearing, we're taking comments from the commission.
As I said before, I mean, errors happen, I understand that, it's not to, not blaming anybody, but, but I, I do see that if somebody got this notice, or got word of this, and, and on the first page, they saw Sullivan Street, they might not have thought that that related to Reserve Way. I mean, it, if you look on the first page of our handout, and some people, they look at the first page, and they're like, "Oh, okay, that's not me."
Is that what got mailed to the homeowner?
No, but what the, they're told, what they're told is, this is where you can go look at the staff report, you know, like, if you want to find out information, the link was to this report. And so I could just see that somebody might go on this link, first page, Sullivan Street, "Oh, that's not me," and ignore it, and then find out a few days later, it is really their street. I mean, so for that reason, although, for that reason, I could see validly postponing it to the next meeting. However, everything that everybody has said is correct, it's R4. If it comes in under those recommendations, every single thing that's been proposed is completely legal, proper, and it would be improper of us to deny the property owner to develop it in the way that he chooses, he or she chooses. So it, I'm, it wouldn't, I can't think of anything that would change my opinion of that. I'm just saying that in terms of noticing requirements, it may be that because there was an error just on the first page, it caused some people not to take notice that was intended.
In, in the, in the Facebook community page for the neighborhood, it's been, it's been a hot topic of conversation for days. I've, you know, so everybody who is on that Facebook page knows it was Reserve Way. I mean, there, there's been, in fact, my youngest daughter and son-in-law used to live in Bridgefield, so I've been getting bombarded by her in Birmingham. So I mean, she, she knew about it down in Birmingham.
I mean, clearly they know now, clearly, because there's a lot of people...
They knew about it last week.
You want to be done? You keep back to...
Megan, I'm gonna put you on the spot, is there, was the typo on the first page, is there any concern moving forward? Is it your city attorney?
For a minute. You know, it's my opinion, and Mary Beth, that as long as the specific mailed notice was compliant, and it was, the mislabeling of the street on the document on the website does not defeat the overall, overall accuracy of the application, or the review of the technical review committee, or the analysis of the planning department.
Hey, I'm sorry, I keep getting texts that they can't hear the speakers in the audience, and...
With our city attorney, but to clarify, the staff report, which isn't a required document, it, the project title is Reserve Way, the location says the northwest corner of Reserve Way in Waltriana. All throughout the document, it talks about Reserve Way, the header talks about Reserve Way. So there, that, it's unfortunate that it said Sullivan in very small white letters on that picture. The other protocol in any kind of report like this is the report itself over a graphic would supersede. So, you know, the fact that the location was very clearly identified, and the notice was not incorrect, you know, we think that that wouldn't be a, a technical cause to continue the item.
Okay, I just was going off of the speaker who said she did not think it applied to her because she saw Sullivan, that's all.
I understand.
Just wanted to represent that.
I got it, yeah.
All right, thank you, any other comments from the commission?
I just got one quick question, where are we asking for time for? If we said, you know, you said, "Give them more time," so what are we asking for time to do what?
Well, at the time, before the city attorney spoke, and before Mary Beth spoke just then, I thought that there could be some question that we hadn't properly noticed the project. Now that the city attorney has explained that the mislabeling does not nullify the notice, then I'll withdraw that.
All right, any other comments from the commission, or take a motion?
I sincerely hope that the developer talks to the HOA, and a dialogue ensues. But other than that, I don't know what else you can do.
Let me, I would like to say, I want to get on my civic soapbox for one moment. I've heard several people say, "Why would the city want this?" That's irrelevant, the city didn't ask for this, the city didn't own the property, the city, it was rezoned so far back, it's been this for forever, it is R4, that's a fact. This is not a city going out and looking for a project and putting out its piece of property. We've had this comment a thousand times, and I understand it, the trees. If you like the trees, buy the trees, you don't own that lot, a human being does, they own those trees. If you have been caring for them, and loving them, and maintaining them, it wasn't negative, it was for the benefit of your neighborhood, because it was the entrance. I live in Heritage Plantation, we maintain... I live in Heritage Plantation. We maintain a lot of city space, city-owned land, because it looks better at the entrance of our neighborhood. But if the city wants to come in and put in a eight-lane road that takes up 40 feet of our, we don't own it land, it's the city's land. And that's what happened at the front of this neighborhood. The city owned land that you maintained for the benefit of your neighborhood. Now you don't anymore. The trees, if you have a tree on your piece of property, you can cut it down. You can cut a tree down in your front yard if you don't piss off the HOA. That's a different story. Don't go there. But you own a bush, you own a tree, you can cut down the tree. This human being owns this piece of property and he owns the trees on it. And if he wants to cut them down, he can, under most regulations in general, you can't preclude this human being from cutting down his trees. Separate from city rules and regs and, you know, gross overall higher level development rules, but that's just the way it is. It has been zoned this for forever. You're lucky it hadn't happened before. Now that piece of property has been wanted to be purchased by lots of people for lots of times and it hasn't sold and it could have come up a long time ago. So the city in this land is doing, and if you read the notes, it said it, based on rules in place when the human being bought this piece of property, he could have put 19 units on there. You may not like that and maybe that needs to be changed if that is a thing. But it's not going to happen now and you can't preclude the human being from use of his property. If you bought a piece of property in a neighborhood to build a house, you put $100,000 down, you bought a piece of R1 land and you're going to build a house. And for us to come back six months later and say, sorry, you can't build a house on that piece of property, you would be suing the city, you would be up in arms, you would be all of that. So I don't unfeel for your situation. I know you may not want it there. But we are not doing anything that is, if we denied this, we could legally be sued by the entity for, for property taking. We have denied him the use of property he rightfully bought for a rightful purpose, pre-approved and designated. And as long as he meets zoning codes and regulations and building, excuse me, building codes and all the other, he's got a thousand piles of things to go through. But if he builds a structure that meets that, that the city told him he had to meet, it is our duty legally to approve this and move on. That's my civics lesson for tonight. I'm sorry.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Please move to approve.
Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And as I stated before, we'll try to help bridge the relationship between the developer and the HOA. Next item on the agenda is Everstead Stub Division Preliminary Plat for 30 residential lots and one tract on 42.9 acres. We're also going to take public comments with, with respect. And we'll also hear presentations since it's combined with this project, the site plan for an additional 203 residential units on 31.92 acres. So at this time, is the applicant here wish to address the commission? All right, Johnny?
Okay, we're going to start with the, kind of start with the plat and then I will work in the, the site plan a little bit. So technically halfway through this, the public hearing closes, but...
Yeah, I know. We're walking a fine line on public comments, I know.
We all know where this property is. It's just to the west of here. It's north of Mill. And it's, it's west of Hughes Road and City Hall. It's divided into two pieces. So we know that it's split zoning too. Part of this is R4 and part of it's R2. That's why we're doing a preliminary plat and a site plan. And I want to go to this drawing first. So this will help us. For the preliminary plat, we're going to have 30 lots and one tract. The 28 of the 30 lots will be for rental. Those are going to be those lots you see in white that are to the far left there that we looked at with the layout last couple of months ago, whenever it was. And the other two lots, there's two lots in this Mill Road. It's actually one lot now and it's the Juan property, the old Juan family home. And that will be subdivided and it will end up being two lots. The R4 part is actually included, is going to be included in the boundaries of the subdivision as a tract. And that is mainly to help facilitate any easements and dedications we need that can be done by plat. When the plat's recorded, it's a whole lot easier to dedicate that stuff by plat than to do and get all the little individual deeds. It's harder to research and find. So it is actually a, it's actually going to be a, a tract in the subdivision. There will be 1,106 linear feet of street. That's going to be that part that those lots, those 30 or 28 lots are fronting on that's coming off of Mill. This project will be a gated community at both ends. It has access to Hughes. It'll be gated there. It'll be gated going into Mill Road. One area of compliance that needs to be, that needs to be addressed is one of the lots. When we were checking the lot table is, was 10,104 square feet. That's a little bit short of the 10.5. They're going to have to readjust those lots. They can do it, but they're going to have to do it to get 10,500 square feet in that. So we also, with this plat, are going to have, going to have like four votes on this. Site plan, the plat, but there's also a sidewalk. The applicant is asking to pay a fee in lieu for the sidewalk along Mill Road. The city council approved this concept in a MOU. And there is currently no sidewalk on the north side of Mill Road between Hughes and Landers. There is no room to install one in front of the cemetery and due to utilities and existing development to the west, it is unknown if the city will ever be able to install the sidewalk on the north side. Those were the reasons. There is also a buffer request between the R4 and the R2. This may be more of a site, on the site plan end of this, but since these are two zoning districts, 518 is the zoning code. You usually see this between commercial and residential. But adjacent to R4, you have to have a 20-foot buffer. And so what's going to happen here is they've asked for a waiver to, to do the six-foot privacy fence set in a five-foot buffer. These are just backyards that are backing up to one another. So you're not getting any dissimilar use or anything like that. It's one project. It's just because of those, those, the situation that they are in two different zoning districts. So next, I want to go to the preliminary plat comments. And we, we have some errors in the notes. They need to correct their acreage. They need to provide dimensions on some of their lot lines. It doesn't have those. These are little things. Of course, I remember the, mentioned the minimum lot size. They need to include the area of track one in their lot table. They didn't do that. Some of the certificates say final plat. They need to add their design speed, it's not distance table, and their side intersection certificate and signature. So I didn't put those on there because they were going to take up half the page and you wouldn't be able to read anything. For the engineering end, for the preliminary, it says, why is there a PDU across lot 26? If it needs to be here, sanitary sewer, be sure to, wide enough. They provide a note that states all easements and right-of-ways are private. Dimension, all easements individually. Confirm easements are dimension significantly to account for drainage. What is the line that appears to be an easement across 209 Mill Road? And the owner of 209 Mill Road sent me an email and it's in your packet wanting to know the same thing. And add all standard engineering notes, submit a copy of the ADM permit. With that, I'm going to go back and, and look at some of the site plan stuff real quick. There's 200 and, I believe it's 203, is it 203 in the resident, in the, in the R4 side of these units that we've been discussing, 169, 167, single-family detached, 22 duplexes, 42 townhomes. There's 22 one-bedroom units, 85 two-bedroom units, 686 three-bedroom units, 38 four-bedroom units. So there will be 323 surface parking spaces, 11 garage spaces, 44 spaces for additional garage space for 44 spaces. And then direct access to attached garage, 138 units will have those. So that, that's a breakdown. You would also have a clubhouse and a pool in there. And part of this project is that on city property, between this and Hughes Road, there will be, the main, the main access will be going out to Hughes Road. Site plan comments include for planning, provide distance between buildings. This is to ensure that it meets the building code. Shorten the landscape medium in Hughes Road, in medium to the access to Hughes Road. That is that area that's going in, that is between the R4 part and Hughes Road. There's some islands there. They're giving us some easements that allows mowers to get in that way. That was curbed. So with, with the islands, so we wanted them to shorten it what they've asked. If they can do a mountable curb to allow the mowers to go over it, then we're okay with that. Define location, a buffer zone between the R4 and the R2 that they show that and clearly define it. For the engineering, it's the ADM permit. Ensure all easements are labeled. Lot unit numbers on site plan must match the, the address plan. Remove lots 29 and 30 in common area from the lot table. Five, label all easements, label curb type at unit 154. Add between 156 and 157, dimension ADA parking stalls. Correct flow direction indicated at east side of the entrance of Mill Road. Correct spelling, label on maintaining grass throughout. Confirm site distance compliance. And that was the same as my site distance table. Correct page numbering and add painted stop bar and a stop sign at the exit on Mill Road. That is, that should take care of both projects, so.
All right. Thank you. It's a long one, Johnny. All right, at this point, we'll open up for public comments. All right, seeing that there are none, we'll close public comments and that closes the public hearing. Comments from the commission?
Johnny, I hate to ask this, and I'm not going to ask you to repeat what you said. But the amount of comments and contingencies and corrections that you had on that drawing, I mean, one, it sounded like you were reading my research paper and that was, you know, the proof comments that I needed to do from draft. But if you found that many errors or that many comments, do you think you got them all? In other words, if you found that many, maybe that's like the first revision and are you sure they meet regs on everything else? In other words, should they maybe go fix those and you do a rev two and second review to make sure that everything else is caught? And I'm just, I'm just asking because I know I usually write like four or five revisions of a research paper before I get every, well, probably more than that, before I get everything right.
You can buy them now, you know.
This is the rev two? Wow.
Our normal, right, there's an initial submittal. We do a very, as you can tell, we do a very exhaustive review of plans. And, and then the applicants submit a revised set of plans.
And this is rev two?
And then we go through and review those plans. That revised set comes in. We don't have a lot of time to review it, but we have plenty of time and we, we review it. And it was all submitted in last week and then we do an updated list. And so the contingencies that you're seeing is the rev two list. And sometimes there are outstanding comments because we're still going back and forth with the applicant's engineer to kind of finalize things and kind of what the ultimate plan will be. Sometimes they're, you know, the engineering team maybe didn't have time to finish something. We, we would not schedule it if we thought, kind of similar to what Johnny was saying before, I think it was on the Madison Branch project, you know, we wouldn't schedule it if we didn't think that the comments, even though they may be numerous, they might be little cleanup things. We wouldn't schedule it if we were concerned about engineering feasibility or technical feasibility. But it, there are still contingencies, so it is your prerogative if you wanted to, to...
I just, that just concerned me with that amount of comments. So...
So I think there was a comment in a, in a letter as well as a question, I think when we saw this before, about whether we needed to add, well, traffic study on Mill Road and whether we were going to add a turn lane on Mill Road to deal with traffic backups and fire trucks and everything else. Are we not requiring that and...
I want to say something real quick for, for Mike, for Michael is, and is that he has received revisions, additional revisions. I think we got those one or two days ago. And they have not had a chance to, to get through that, to go through this list and mark, mark anything off with those. So I just want to...
Okay. So what can you tell me about traffic studies and turn lanes that have come up previously? I don't know who wants to talk to that. Okay. So yeah, switching subjects.
There was a, a traffic study that was completed. It was reviewed by engineering staff. And the traffic study concluded that no additional turn lane was required. There was no off-site improvement that would be required in association with this development.
Mill Road's good then. Okay.
Correct.
And sidewalk access is on the south side of the road for anybody that needed access to the sidewalk or wanted to walk to the elementary school?
Correct.
Was another question in the letter.
And the Mill Road access will be resident and emergency vehicle access only.
Okay. All right.
Is there a sidewalk along the south side?
South side of Mill, there is.
All the way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. So we have, if we don't have any other comment or comments from the commission, I think we need, I got some notes here from Johnny. I don't know if they're in our notes, but we need, first one we need is a vote for a payment in lieu of fee for a sidewalk on Mill Road. I guess I can read these off. Second motion will be for a vote of substitution of the 20-foot landscaping buffer required in section 518, 518-5 with a six-foot opaque structure set in a five-foot side landscape buffer. I'm going to let you read this one off. And then a vote for preliminary plat and a vote for a site plan, so.
Move to approve sidewalk payment in lieu of...
Second.
Roll call. Aye.
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 All right, second motion.
And to be clear, this... It's a move to approve the substitution of a twenty-foot landscape barrier in lieu of a fence and whatever. Johnny, you said that's because of the nature of these two different pieces of property joining. It's just an internal thing. This isn't external to external homeowners or anything like that, cemetery and all that. Okay. So, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
Move to approve... Do you wanna say how loud that was approved?
It was approved.
Okay. Move to approve site plan, subject to...
No.
Oh, preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat, sorry. Well, skip one. Subject to a few staff comments.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Last one.
Move to approve site plan.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item under site plans is Stabridge Suites. Site plan for a five-story, eighty-eight-room hotel on two-point-seven-nine acres. Is the applicant here wish to address the commission? Johnny?
Throw all those comments. Stabridge. Sorry about that.
All right.
This is a... This... Let me use, it's been around a while. You may remember that this came through several years ago with Candlewood.
Candlewood.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then the project just kinda went away, and now it's back. So it's a little bit different. The last one was four stories. It was, I think, eighty-one lots, eighty-one rooms, and this one's a little bigger. It's... Can we say the location here? Off Sullivan Street and... Benrun, I believe, is close to that. And it's Zone B3, and this is kind of the layout of this. And it's two-point-seven-nine acres, one hundred and four parking spaces. The... One of the... The applicant will be leaving some of the tree buffer that's on the north side in place. That was something that y'all... Y'all approved a buffer reduction, almost like you did with Everstead, if they would leave their trees in place there. So that's gonna carry over to this site plan. One of the things you also did was you approved a... Allowed them to pay a fee in lieu of the sidewalk, the five-foot sidewalk. However, because the project didn't go through, we never got the fee, so we're asking for that fee to be paid with this. So we recommend approval with the fee, and we need a North Arrow on the vicinity map. And we have these engineering comments, and... Just let y'all look through those. If y'all have any questions, Mike could answer those. That's all the comments.
All right, open for comments from the commission, and my first one, isn't there already a sidewalk on... Sold in there with the widening?
There is a sidewalk. When it came through before, I don't believe there was. I think the city has put the sidewalk in.
Now there's a sidewalk there, ain't there?
Yeah, but...
They gotta pay for it now.
Their fee in lieu will help reimburse that. That's one of the things we do, like Madison Boulevard. We're saving these fee in loos if we ever redo Madison Boulevard, and we put sidewalk in, we can put that money towards that, so...
If the sidewalk's pre-existing, we go back and charge them for it?
Yes.
Okay.
We have?
You already... You already...
Don't do that across the board.
Okay.
You see, you had the buffer have a grandfather clause between this hotel and a nursing home.
And the grandfather.
And you got the same grandfather clause going on with the sidewalk.
All right.
Because they agreed to fee in lieu of...
Okay.
For the first time.
But that's a separate motion? The fee in lieu of the sidewalk? Okay, so it's staying with the project? Yeah, I know.
Okay.
What is gonna do to the value of my house now, Mr. Cottle?
Move to approve, subject to contingencies.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Aye.
Quick question. What were they... What was the kind of hotel being built behind the State Store? The State Store? Oh, it wasn't a... Is it gone? We ain't seen that, have we? Okay.
All right. Next item, Primrose School Site Plan for thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-five square foot daycare facility on two-point-oh-six acres. Is the applicant here wish to address the commission? All right, Johnny. I hope this one is not as controversial as daycare we did.
Yes, that's... Please, let it be one care.
This is a... You said it all. It's a thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-five square foot daycare. It's off of Field... I think it's Field View Lane. This is the property, the new road that was built off of Huntsville Brown's Ferry, just west of county line. We did the 360 out there, and we did several other things. But it's Zone B2, and that's a little look at the site plan here. Student capacity is one hundred and ninety-four. They'll have twenty-five teachers, five staff members, forty-seven parking spaces. We got to use our new parking regs this time, and they seem to be doing well. And we recommend approval with just one comment this time, and they need to label their buffers between them and the residential. They have the proper spacing. They just need to label.
All right, comments from the commission?
Did you have to notify any property owners, or is it too far? Like, I noticed on the thing, there's no property owners adjacent?
There's no notification required for site.
Oh, okay.
I'm just admiring the traffic flow relative to...
Are you? You're happy to go with that one?
Yeah, good.
Actually, I'm surprised based upon all the... What we went through previously, that there's not a covered awning for drop-off lines, but that's a prerogative, but... Hundred ninety-four students, all right. Any comments?
Move to approve, subject to one staff comment.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. We're on to subdivision guarantees. First one, Heritage Hills Phase One Construction Performance. Any comments? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All right, need a vote, motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right, next item, Heritage Hills Phase One Sidewalk Performance.
Proof. Second.
First and second. All right, roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right, next item is Greenbrier Hills Phase Four Construction Performance Bonds.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Too many.
Second.
Who got the move?
I...
All right, I know he's trying to write all this down. All right, roll call.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right, and last one is Greenbrier Hills Phase Four Sidewalk Performance.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Jump in there.
Mr. Westen.
Aye.
Mr. Potter.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Cottle.
Aye.
Councilman Seaver.
Aye.
Ms. Palmer.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and I think the last thing is, I understand this is Megan's last time with us. I don't know how many more weeks you have, but last time we'll see you, so we wish you the best, and hopefully we'll see you around town. I understand you're not going far, so... Thank you for your service. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody.